Megan and I will...
I sit there because there's a table to write on.
Yeah. Just to kind of frame up, and I know I sent an email out last week that framing up our discussion. Really want to walk through our survey responses and then dig deeper into some of the work that our department heads, Megan and myself, have been doing relative to preparing for a budget amendment recommendation council. On your desk in front of you are a couple sheets. One is the 2019-2020 list of department requests. This is a culmination of pieces that our department heads submitted to both Megan and myself as far as, you know, looking at the short-term priorities for this fiscal year, what do they see as needing to accomplish. The way this spreadsheet is structured, it will give you an opportunity to take some notes, what Megan and I would ask as we kind of go through this workshop this evening, to look at some of these priorities, take some notes. We'd like to collect those responses at the end of the workshop.
So you want these two pages back?
We will want those two pages back.
Okay.
So that's the first two pages. The other spreadsheet is a summation of our salaries per department. And so if you think about each set of employees, there's a number of full-time employees, a number of part-time employees that comprise their current salaries. And then we looked at and walked through that when we get to that point in the slide. This is certainly designed to be more workshop. We don't have all the answers. This is really meant to be an open dialogue and discussion. Kind of diving in, you know, top three to five budget expectations. Really, the theme that continues to be pervasive is working on the streets, working on our utility infrastructure. We also see a high amount of requests relative to our parks and that infrastructure. And so understanding what those park needs are based on that master plan study that was completed and then prioritization of that. We also had comments around remodel administrative offices, our space usage from the city perspective, which you will be addressing through our budget process as well. You know, really developing, you know, as I think about it, that comprehensive plan for our streets, talked about that at our last council meeting, what we're doing with the outputs and how we prioritize street rebuilds as well as the seal coating with a target date in December 10th for this year. But certainly as we walk through the budget process, we'll talk some about what those dollars are going to look like this year too.
So Ramon and Benny, you didn't make any inputs here, or is this not reflected? Do you see things any differently?
I was going to ask, was there something I missed or was a survey supposed to have been sent to us via email to...I never got anything.
We sent it via email in my last council meeting. I reviewed it again with everybody asking for it once.
But I never received any in my own email account at home. I never got a request for the survey.
It went out to the city email.
What about your city email?
Maybe I didn't look down below the...it came in with the...with what?
I...
Yeah, came with...
With the attachment.
To be honest with you, I missed it, but I did come up with my own list after I saw this.
We talked about it last week too. You remember that?
Are there any additions to what we see from a priority recommendation?
Did you receive it?
Yeah.
We're checking now, we can verify that the city director is there. We don't want to announce a different story.
Yeah, Benny, we had the discussion. He told me you had received and you didn't have work to do with it, or that you didn't...
Is that the one?
Yes, that was it. Well, Eric could say any of us need anything, he could do that. He would help us.
We talked about that last week. What? Second question.
Can I still submit my recommendations for Ward Two?
Yes. We're working through that, finalizing that draft on email.
Can you share with us what your thoughts are, because we all put ours in, it's reflected up there, is about the, would you like to discuss about priorities, what were your priorities? Which went for...take a break. We all pulled out the pages for it.
The first question was really designed to look at budget expectations.
Do you want me to read all of them?
Sure.
Okay, for the budget expectations, I'm recommending assessment in employee training and especially in the field of safety. And procure required safety equipment and tools for employees. Now planning and zoning commission to initiate a longer GIS strategic plan for Alpine. An economic development survey or plan to address potential businesses for Ward Two. Explore the possibility of working with Saul Ross University or other university regarding maybe vocational school or community training school in Ward Two or Ward Four.
A part of that would be a school, that's probably a multi-year project. Hopefully we can accomplish that this fiscal year, certainly at Saul Ross's.
And of these, what I would consider the most important are training for employees.
Yeah, and you'll see on the list of department requests, training actually queued up for most of our department heads. So we got several different facets of that on the dot this year.
I guess I would comment though, I would struggle with the city putting money against a vocational school, that's not our charter.
Is it a school?
Well, that's between AISD and Saul Ross.
And I think Saul Ross at one point said that they weren't going to start the whole funding.
Yeah, the nursing program that worked is, I don't know, is where it lies on that.
Yeah. I think relative to other vocational training, that's going to require real heavy lifting with someone like Saul Ross or another accredited institution that has the framework, training plans. It's, you know, not just facility space, but it's also equipment, things of that nature too. But a lot of that, I certainly believe that support from a community perspective as we develop, don't know whether it's, it's certainly not something that we would execute on this year, but we certainly could work at it from a thought, how can you incorporate not only your school district with Saul Ross into those discussions too.
Now, I've talked to AISD on that subject, that's a subject they're interested in, but I don't, I should help you with allocating resources from a city standpoint that ought to be back with our educational system, so Alpine independent school district and or Saul Ross.
Paying responses, certainly, how do we allocate as much as possible? Councilor Curry, probably the one complaint that you're hearing, as we talked about in that last meeting, Seventh Street is a daily reminder to you as well. Yeah, it's worse than that one. Eddie, although Eddie told me there's a couple blocks that are worse than that. Yeah, I think Councilor Escamigos and Councilor Stevens, with how much do we allocate? I know we've talked about 1.2, 1.1 million. Some of the work that you'll see, like on this particular spreadsheet, you'll see a $750,000 figure for quote-unquote road material. Where that's gestating from is, we want to go back to Burgon and you, our discussion with Bobby Law from there, who's been located out of the mix several years, we've been a good partner, gets in order for us, pure material to seal coat 100 blocks, right? So that's kind of our 90% target, that's $250,000. And historically as a city, we've spent about $450,000 in contracts back with Jared Dirk works, so that gets us in that $750,000 range. We're probably going to have to push the needle up on that a little bit, just to make sure we have the right amount of patching and ancillary material as well. But I think we're going to be, when we look at it, we're going to be more in the 1.2, 1.4 million dollar range this year in order to accomplish rebuilding 25 to 30 blocks and seal coating 100 blocks.
Did you want to dive into this list and I are wait to kind of go through this and come back?
Let's go through this and we'll come back.
Did, Ramon, did you have any paving?
Yes, the only thing I recommend, or the amount of money considered, recommend the recommendation, implement the recommendations of the street conditions and of course repair plan completed in 2019. And to consider some allotment to street pedestrian crossing and assessment, especially in those areas where there's a strong pedestrian traffic in downtown Alpine. We need to have better marking for those areas.
Would that be Tech Stop, since that's a highway?
On a state highway, Tech Stop would have to initiate a cross. One of the pieces that Eddie and I looked at, and I know he's queued up as a request on just a small basement or a block, is a, I call it a painter, but I know that's not the formal...
It's a striper.
Striper, yeah. But Eddie's got a quote that's in the $31 to $3400 range, and that's just using our interim labor then at that point, plus paint. We are looking at some of the key areas in downtown, also around the schools. And the other thing that Eddie was looking at is how do we source a better quality paint so that it lasts longer or so.
Because didn't that one point Tech Stop said that they didn't, they were not going to paint the crosswalk?
Right, that was my...
Yep, took Chris's advice, yeah.
Somebody said that they had that.
I think the other discussion that posture up yesterday too, that we've got to look at including in the budget is some basic signage. A lot of people don't realize that crosswalks, pedestrians have the right way. And we need to clearly note that in the public. And so we've got some, you know, across Fifth Street where we've got that crosswalk. I would be one that would not walk out there just saying, hey, I got the right way. But I do think if we do some signage, that will be helpful for people to understand that neighbors crosswalk here.
Yeah, I think part of the challenge of Fifth, having crossed it many times, almost got one over a couple times, how, because of the corners and the buildings, vehicles have to pull further out where you normally expect it to crosswalk, so they're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't. Pedestrians walking across, the cars parked back, then they got to pull up to be able to see so they can make a left or right or go straight. So I think that's probably something we're going to have to go figure out a strategy as for that. It's probably requires a newer crosswalk in order for the cars to be able to come up on front. So I think we're going to have to talk to Chris about that.
I do think that it's painting and floating, that is certainly important.
Is everyone comfortable with the strategy Eric's talked about relative to chip seal over hot mix? Okay, well, the reason I ask is, the report that came from KSA said no on chip seal and at $40,000 a block for hot mix at a minimum, and said we're only going to get about 10 blocks a year. So that's why I think it's really important, we're all aligned that chip seal is the way we're going to go, except in those instances where hot mix makes sense because of trash trucks and things like that, but everything else is chip seal. So I just wanted to, because I think from a budget standpoint, you have to plan based upon what your budget's going to be.
Yeah, and I really think, you know, based on our conversation in that streets workshop from a few weeks ago, you know, even last year if you attended, you know, we sit down, we talked to Lance, we talked to Eddie. Yeah, we'd love to, to put hot mix down or everything. Yeah, that's a preferential way down, but the reality of it is, in order to really get some of these roads up to a basic standard, we're going to have to push hard on the chip seal program for the next three to five years, and then come back on some of these main roads and put down a hot mix. I think the bridge that we're going to have to cross at that point in time is when you create a super smooth road, then people tend to drive a little faster. And so, you know, and how do you navigate through keeping speed down while also keeping road condition up?
For the 1.3 million, I believe you mentioned the chip seal process, how many roads will that cover?
What we're looking at is between 25 and 30 full rebuilds, 25 to 30 blocks, and then about 100 blocks of just a seal coat, which is just one top layer. So basically we patch real good and then we just put a top layer. And we were, we did about 175 blocks between 2016 and 2017 with just that top seal coat. And that really tightened up a lot of the roads. Carpenter addition is one area that I would say is a good representation of what happened in that period of time. You know, I was through that neighborhood this last weekend, there was an estate sale there and those roads are really still holding up pretty well. Any questions? Third question on the airport. Certainly, at a high level, from my perspective, we love having an airport in the community because it does a lot of things, bringing in tourism, it does bring in residents that want to live in a community that has a small municipal airport, allows us from a evacuation of people with medical conditions, it gives us that capacity as well. You know, we certainly see more and more people buying online and having the flight pattern in where they're dropping off packages and it would be...so there are things that occur there. The Airport Advisory Board, as well as the staff out there, has been working collectively on fuel pricing strategies to try to maximize through the book that we get on revenue, because that really is our only source of revenue out there, is those fuel sales, other than the ramp grants that we get. I think, you know, when I started here in 2013, we had a person and a half that worked out there, now we're up to two full-time staffers. It focused more as on mowing, maintaining, without having a second full-time person. There were requests by the Airport Advisory Board out over a three-year period relative to seal coat at the runway, different seal coat there, we don't use a chip seal on a runway. But also the lighting system, we do have the design queued up this year, so that's the one major expense, although it's not really high, it's about $7,000, $7,000, $9,000 per 10%. But then we've got to be saving the dollars for the new lights to go into 21, 22 timeframe, as well as the seal coat of the runway, around that, next year or year after or so.
Is there a case set for that seal coat?
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
My plan again this year is to go back out to their airport conference. What we've found in the years past is that if we do attend it on occasion, then it allows us to be front center with their executive team, which tends to give us a little preference on the queuing up. And of course, all of this made it work is done, 90/10, Tech Stop, they should pay 90% plus paying 10%. So we absolutely need to make sure we do that. Thoughts?
My only other thought is, it's pretty much blended in there, is maybe an allotment to the Airport Advisory Board to look at a long-term strategy, a strategic plan for the future of the airport, with focus, as already mentioned, repairs, improvements, but also potential revenue opportunities.
Yeah, the revenue side, outside of fuel cells, there's not a lot. I'm trying to think, I know you're a pilot, but I know Megan has provided some oversight of the airport.
The number one source for revenue at the airport is going to be fuel cells, because we're a general aviation airport and we follow the grant disturbances, we receive state funding. We're limited to anything and everything at the airport being aviable, whether it be aviable business, aviable, there has to be aviable purposes. Lease of the hangars is another revenue. Ideally, the city could make additional revenue if we owned our own hangars. So if the city had the opportunity at some point to establish its own hangars, we could lease them at an actual lease amount and not per square foot, because they wouldn't be leasing the land, they'd be leasing the whole facility. So that is a big revenue source for a lot of smaller airports, they own the hangars. We don't own any of the hangars out there.
Yeah, but I think that would be something that council would have to look at and determine. It comes down to how much cash we want to spend on the airport versus streets or parks.
It's a straight home business model. You're going to spend, we have four hangars going up out there, I'm not sure what Kate's spending on that, but I suspect it's going to be more than $200,000. And hopefully play that out, and by that you can taxes and all the other issues, that's not true when they do. So I, I'd have a hard time supporting hangars because it's capital investors get paid back over the years. That pool of income we appreciate over 30 years.
Yes.
Useful life, so that's what makes it economical. I think the only other thing, it could be that I see in other airports is if they have a terminal, that could have a restaurant in it, and then you lease that out to a third party and then pay their rent. That's also a big capital investment to go do, so that'd be a tough one to go do. But I know there's lots of small airports with fly-ins, they make good money on those.
We tried flying twice.
Yeah, and we did talk with the Airport Advisory Board this last board meeting relative to organizing fly-in. Wasn't a lot of motivation from the board to do that, because I think...
That's what happened in the second. The first one, city staff put all the work into it, unfortunately had the bad weather. The second one, we were going to do it as an anniversary to George Voss, everyone was on board, they all had ideas, but no one did anything.
Yeah, so, yeah, as I said, the only way to do it is build a terminal that's got a kitchen in it, you lease the terminal out for someone to go provide that, order breakfast, lunch service. But it's something that's great, but all comes at a price.
Questions in here? Parks, I know I saw a park seat tucked in here, it's not a park board.
Another one chomping for money.
Yes.
You know, I, yeah, I guess I think about the parks in two different facets. Two different main projects that have queued up consistently. One is the splash pad concept, and then the second is, can we hit a homerun at Quail and Way of Park? And so if you take a walk up to Hancock Hill, you look down across the city, and you think about it, if I'm a kid, where I go play, if I live on the southeast side of the city, you got to go a long ways, you have to Vane's Park. We've got a really neat plot of land, we've got a great vision down. I've asked the Parks Board to, not only have they put together a concept plan for Quail and Way of Park, but also to associate a cost strategy for that. It's not something that we would be able to pay for out of our, our general budget, year-in, year-out budget, we would have to look at an equity transfer in order to fund that. But those are, those are a couple of things as far as bigger capital projects from a parks perspective. Relative to equipment, Robert needs a mower this year, absolutely needs a mower. And I think we've looked at a lot of feedback and comments on our survey results, it's about enabling our people with the right tools to succeed, and so that really fits in well with Robert's plan. I think we can attack the mower through our existing budget, but then it's going to require us to look at these other entities, or these other two major projects with some type of equity or fund balance transfer.
So is the mower in the plan? I see the $25,000 for a mowing deck, that's probably not enough for additional mower.
No.
That's just to take care of the one we got now.
Yeah, just to take care of the one that we have now. Interesting enough, we, we actually had the mower approved in the 2017 budget, never got bought.
Never got bought?
Never got bought.
Didn't get bought.
And so we, we've come back to that, I apologize.
So actually, it's not on the parks one, it's under the airport as tractor slash mower?
Ah, got it.
In my thinking process, they needed 10 times more than the parks, in my thinking process, but they share anyway, so I just put it in one.
Gotcha.
The concept, I believe, we talked about it at the meeting, Robert reminded me that it would kind of be a shared, I think that's what it was.
Take three ways?
Yeah. So I just, the airport didn't have a lot of it.
Gotcha, okay, so it's in the bucket.
It's in the bucket.
And I think that brings up a good point of conversation, because we really do work very diligently, our staff does, with sharing the large capital pools out there to help keep our costs down as a city.
So if the deck gets replaced in the existing mower and you get the new mower, is that enough then?
If your deck gets replaced and then we get the new mower, we'll be able to get...
Because the new mower is, like Megan said, it's going to be shared with airports, streets, and parks.
Okay.
The deck he's referring to is just for his existing mower to use on the parks.
But we'll be able to handle all the mowing at that point.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, and that the deck for the big mower?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Probably just got the heck beat out of it from all the rocks and then say you got to replace it or something. Yeah, it's more labor than it is material.
What about the goat head burner?
I've lined it up many times.
The multi-head thing that the parks chairman.
Right. So one of the other elements, tools that parks chair has talked about is goat head burner. We're going to start burning off goat heads as well.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. You kept it on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are a little lower dollar we can get, but we certainly plan on adding that to the arsenal.
One of the things I mentioned for the parks recreation segment is the purchase and installation of the historic plaques ennoting the names, history of the individuals for which the municipal parks were named, Medina, Mainz, and Copernum. The last I heard from the parks advisory board is that they had been fairly approved or it was just a matter of funding. And the funding isn't that much from whatever you said, five hundred dollars or so. So I thought I'd just throw that.
We had put that on our wish list to our council members. I don't have a copy of this that you guys do, so I'm not sure what all the line items are, but that was one of them that we had requested for the next fiscal year.
Just like what fifteen hundred bucks or more?
I think it's about five.
You know, I don't know why I bring that with me, but yes, something like that.
It'll take about a year since you were.
It was three plaques. Each one had a picture of the person who represented the field and then a little history of it. And depending on the material that the city went with, whether we wanted to do the weatherized, kind of make it last longer, it was three hundred to five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And I think we had just said five hundred per, which was fifteen hundred. Yes. And council did approve it last year. There was no follow-up on who, what, when, or why.
Let's add that one back. Anything else?
In the discussion, I'm sorry, in the discussion of training that you all had previously, does that include specific training for park staff, like a playground safety training? There were a lot on the list that we had submitted specific to parks.
Right. So.
Not that all the guys would need to be trained on playground safety equipments, but you know, each kind of have their specialty maybe.
Right. One of the, one of the pieces that, once we get through our leadership training, we're having our supervisors work through the rest of their training budget on specific. In fact, we actually talked about it at department head meeting this morning. How do you have specific training for your department, your specific role, and then executing on that? We've got to take those classes a year and then just methodically build our base. I know the one that Robert's also queued up is on sprinkler irrigation maintenance as well. So we've got to get that accomplished this year too. A part of what our, you know, five-year capital plan, when I left here in twenty seventeen, we had zeroed in on, I thought it was like pretty good lists on, you know, what we needed to do before, certainly over time, things change. And what we tried to come back to this year was a real look at what specifically do we need to get done this year? How do we rebuild those projects and those assets that need to be replaced so that next year we have a very robust five-year plan? You know, I think the comments that we may hear relative to how do we promote safety, how we also, so that we're not using the old lap data equipment or, you know, as Marcy indicated, you know, we've got abilities to manage playground equipment out there as well in a safety respect. But also then looking at suggestions here for selling off some of our older real estate holdings and then, you know, using that to put back into future projects. So appreciate the input on this. I will also say that one of, our next slide will be on facilities, but because we've got this queued up with Sunshine House here, we do have two primary assets out there, Sunshine House and then the land of the post office here. We've got some opportunities to take action on both of those properties that could bring in some dollars that would help us offset, you know, some of the renovations and capital improvements that we need to make, which probably allows me to kind of take a segue into City Hall right now and looking at what we're trying to do here is really look at, can we move to the north, move the building out, push the building out a little bit more than worth. And look at the northern end of the civic center and go directly to west, boxes in and create, which effectively would be a larger council chambers, but then also larger office space or additional office space for our staff as well as have a specific office that the mayor and council could use for meetings here at City Hall, have it adjacent to council chambers in case you want to bring a bigger group in. This whole ecosystem here could use. In short term, what we will fund this year will be just some lighter renovations in here. Get rid of the screen. You get fifty-inch screens at Costco for under five hundred, or under three hundred dollars.
Yeah, I guess.
And put a screen here and a screen out there so that council, especially on the right, my right side, your left side are not having to pan over so much. So I think there's some subtle improvements that we'll make, but the longer term vision is how do we expand City Hall a little bit, but not really go into any debt doing it, using existing properties that we have.
And you have the space.
We have the space, yeah. Third line.
We could, you know, also have a suggestion here. Could we, could we move some of our operation over to the gas department? Water department, not so much so. They're kind of busting at the seams over there. One of the things that we'll look at is that old municipal work. Can we maybe harvest some space in there for that group over at the old City Hall? One thing that we do like and that you see is you come into the hallway here, there's a lot of collaboration going on, especially between our admin and our finance teams. And in billing as well, when there are billing escalations, whether it's Megan, Cynthia, or myself, you know, we want to be front center with a citizen to help our teams and not leave them out in cold. So having them still here is important. We don't kill a lot of educated citizens, but you know, we get enough that come in that we feel like it's important that we keep this as an environment. You know, more to continue to come and develop on that, but.
Part of my thought on this, Eric, is, you know, on the business, I'm going to have a depreciation schedule. I know my assets are going to wear out. Do we have anything like that here as we think about our, so we do have that?
We do have depreciation. So pretty much all of our assets have been depreciated.
No, no, I understand that. What we have from a value standpoint, I'm looking at it from a replacement schedule standpoint.
If it was utilized, how it should be, yes. We would know basically, we'd use the Gatsby standard number of years, type of equipment. And we would basically know how many times we'd need to replace computers, who's up, who's not up, buildings.
That's what I'm looking for.
One of the things that Megan did as well, I might be stealing her thunder from the council meeting, but she's done some reassignments and duties within her staff this week that will put an emphasis on our assets within our team. So I'll let her discuss that for me.
Along the same lines, I want to consider maybe some funding allotment for upgrading the, any outdated technology with, you know, computers, software printers, and safeguards for City Hall. And this is based pretty much on the various discussions we've had at other meetings and people are saying we need to upgrade, upgrade.
Yeah, great question. We actually addressed IT this morning in our department head meeting. There tends to be this little swirl that comes up about, you know, our system's about to crash and things of that nature. And let me kind of hit that head on. We have an old server that people share. It's a shared folder, shared drive. We call it the L drive here. Employees that have been putting documents in that folder, what we've expressed to them is we also have Google Drive. We pay for the Google Suite products. Those files and folders should be moved into Google Drive, which has the proper backup plus also, because we use the government edition of the Google Suite product, we get the backend security side of that too. Our finance software is backed up in cloud with GoCountry. Our assist, which is our billing software, is also backed up in cloud. So when I hear sometimes people say, oh, you guys are highly vulnerable, we're actually not as vulnerable as most organizations out there. There's always vulnerabilities. We are narrowing down our email addresses. What I mean by that is every employee had been assigned an email address. So when I looked at it, we had employees that had email addresses for forty months and never used them, right? So if I work on Robert's team and I'm out in the field, I don't use a city email address. So what we're doing is scraping those off, get down to those that are actually using email, and then we'll overlay the cybersecurity training on top of that, which is a state requirement now. So I think we should be solid there. As far as equipment, there was a lot of new computers that were bought this past year. We'll continue to assess the performance of those desktops and will probably have to be replacing those in fairly soon.
And we do have an inventory list of all of the computers. In the past two years, we purchased about twenty-two computers for the city. So it's just kind of a rotating process. I know some people want the latest and greatest, especially Mac people. He's a Mac user. But we have a program with Dell, so we tend to get a better deal for ordering bulk. So that list has been very handy with making sure we're, you know.
Yeah. What's your refresh rate, Megan?
For?
For your Dell machines, is it four years?
Ideally, yes. It's actually five. It would be a solid number.
The other thing we talked about today at our department head meeting was ensuring that if we have any turnover employees, then we're also capturing all of their equipment. And so if they've got an issue laptop, if they've got a cell phone, that is all being turned in. We've got to double check off now with supervisor Buck Loram because HR is also checking.
What do you do with the machines or whatever phones? What do you do with them after they, they come to you? What do you do with them?
So we will, well, if we're going to reuse them or repurpose them to back to another employee, we can then do a cleaner refresh on that system and reissue it to the next employee. If, if it's end of life, we'll either sell it if there's value or if there's no value, we'll just recycle it.
All city computers, if we recycle or resell, do not have hard drives. We pull all hard drives.
And push through.
Yeah. Take a punch in.
Talked a little bit about this. The space, I think, you know, looking, looking out into the future, five, ten, fifteen years is something Cynthia and I have talked heavily about. Ask her to really start thinking through what does the future look like? How do we position all of the assets that we own out there? If we're not going to use them, how do we get that in front of council to sell off? But then be thoughtful as we think about our teams, if we're going to have a real increase in our staffing, what would that look like as far as need for the future space? And then also, how do we think about, you know, City Hall in general, right? If we do some renovations here, what's the useful life on that? Is that ten years? Is that fifteen? Is that twenty years? You know, the thing that I worry about that keeps me up at night is some of the older buildings, if we don't have people in them, buildings erode a lot quicker. And we've got to breathe life in them or get them in the hands of somebody who will breathe We've got a lot of folks coming in wanting to buy alleys and things of that nature too, which is good. Additional.
Yeah. My only thought on this particular section was knowing that there's a need for space, office space for employees here at City Hall, it might be worthwhile to start thinking about some allotment to hire an architect to come up with a plan for the future as to how it could be, how this building can be expanded, enhanced, or whatever for.
I raised my hand, Ramon, because the city did hire someone at the beginning of last fiscal year and we paid them twenty thousand dollars. I do not know if we ever ended up with a report.
Whatever. We did not end up with a report because I received three different emails starting the end of January, the first part of February through March, asking if I could reply to the project because emails and phone calls were being sent out and no one was responding to them. So I was not able to help them because I had not been included in that project and/or conversations or emails. So they wanted to know whether to continue with that or if they needed to close that project out so they could move forward with another one. So we never, we never followed through with that.
And I don't think we paid the final payment either.
Were paid a, plenty paid for them?
Yeah, because they came and they did a walkthrough.
So who initiated that?
I'm sorry?
Who initiated that?
Our previous city manager.
Did we approve it? No.
Well, we didn't approve it?
No.
What about the emails? They were going to the city manager's email.
What I would suggest as far as capital spending, when I think about how we renovated the civic center, you know, Eddie and I designed that and we did it for under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which I think had we, had we contracted somebody else to design, do all that, we would have spent closer to four to five hundred thousand on it. I think it comes to the, does the cart get in front of the horse, right? So if we're going to make an investment in a new city hall or a new piece of property or convention center or whatever that may be, I think as a community or as a leadership team, we know specifically what those dollar amounts are going to look like. If we're not willing to commit to that type of dollar amount, to me, it doesn't make any sense to pay an architect or an engineer or somebody of that nature because all we're doing is, is paying them good money for something that doesn't get built. And, you know, most of my background certainly was in telecommunications industry and this was something that we looked at every year. We call it stranded engineering expense. Anytime we brought in engineers or architects and we designed things that didn't turn into a capital project, our goal was always to keep that less than two to three percent of our total capital spend. So I would suggest that we certainly be very cautious and we, we collectively as a group can understand what a new building or facility would cost and make sure we're willing to commit. Because that's part of what happened back in two thousand nine with the city, when the city committed to that Texas Parks and Wildlife grant that we then became defunct in, and that was because it was an eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar project that the city had to commit four hundred and forty thousand to. it was an $880,000 project that the city had to commit 440,000 to. The city never put that 440,000 in reserve, but they signed up and said, "Hey, we'll do this." And so we don't want to repeat that, that passive thing.
We were lucky to get a slap-off notice on that one instead of requesting the funding back. They just said, "Don't apply for a while."
But we've actually had someone come and look at it. Eddie, what year did we have that conversation? They told me that year that they came and actually gave us an assessment of, that they said, "No, let's not do it," and then they backed off on it.
In reference to...
To building out.
Oh, that was, I guess that was back in 2000, ninety, ninety-nine, thousand?
Well, I'm with you, Eric. The reason the husband and our new school district cost a million dollars in house with the latest numbers, they bought it, they already designed it, or it was part of the... A million bucks. They're up close to $300,000. Parkus, we got 200,000 to that type of cost.
Hotel fund. I'll tell you, one of the comments I really liked, it stuck up with me, is, you know, paying for all the upcoming events. We did that in 2017. That's a foundation of what makes things fun here, right? Is how do we support these events? Staying really zeroed in on that from fiscal policy perspective. I think Chris Ruggia certainly been in place for a great many years. He's got good history there. So when we think about some of the bigger and the older events, we've got good relationships there and how we continue to support them. You know, also falling within the fund regulations. We did have a group come out, and I'll talk about it, it's a council meeting later today, but they also are good at helping with policies and how we administrate giving in additional dollars. I believe Chris and David, Lucy and I have also been working on that ordinance to present to council that we create a committee that will provide oversight on these, whereas Chris and I would be ex officio, like members of the committee, but actually have a committee that would provide those recommendations. So I appreciate the candor and feedback on this issue.
My only thought on this, and I agree, the husband funds policy needs review and revision. We also need to maybe, a need to focus on advertising, application, selection, and evaluation process. From what I've heard, a lot of people out there, they want to do things, but they find the application process, the information as to how to apply, who to get in contact to apply and so forth, a little cumbersome, so it might be something to consider. I would say that new events should be encouraged and supported if they qualify. And the only other comment I would like to make is, you know, more people seem to be getting interested in doing things here in Alpine for the benefit of Alpine businesses and so forth. At some point, we may have too many events. You might want to start talking to some leaders and say, "Now, why don't we do one or two major events with all the cultural elements as far as entertainment and so forth?" That would be made official to work. Just an idea.
Yeah, the danger of, well, I think there has to be organization around the dates on the events. There's also the mindset that if people come out and they're not able to accomplish everything, that becomes the hook for them to come back. So you want that robustness of activities that they don't feel like they can get everything done and then sometimes, but you don't want three major events on the same weekend that limits overall performance. So I think we've had, my observation, we did have one weekend this fall that was just super busy, and I couldn't seem to get to everything. But one of the other pieces that had come up was this whole continuity, you know, giving an event funding for only two years versus giving it perpetuity. I think the magic of looking at this every year is looking at each event, whether it's been part of the community for 20 years or whether it's been part of the community for one year. And we need to make determinations on funding for those things that are drawing people in, no matter how old, and not just cutting people off. Because a lot of these events are never going to sell fun. They're going to need support from sponsorship up to including from the hotel office and that sort of thing. Other thoughts? We certainly have our library, family crisis center. I did, I wanted to give this, this is one of those items that we probably have so much need in the community that we could give two million a year to this and still feel like we could give more. So here was, here was some of the thoughts. We're certainly going to try to get as many of these in. And then next year, one of the things I want to do as we get into the budget process for next year is invite some of these different entities to come in and present, talk about what they're doing in the community. And I think if we can get that started January, February, March this next year, and then that will help council make some assessments for next fiscal year as well.
One that I would like to see come back, which I think is important for our community is the children's advocacy. They will have that from work, I think, and they use that with the children.
Can I put Rod on the spot since he's here? So last year, when council looked at the budget, you were informed about the legalities of donating to the different groups. Is there any way to get some clarification for council? I know that it was brought up that someone from the city had to be on the board, they couldn't be a fundraising event, or there was a lot discussed. I don't know if you guys remember that or not.
I'm happy to look at the organizations that the city proposes to have fun and then look up the law on it and bring back the report to the council on if there's any hiccups on, for already money, if any others.
Yeah, to support Megan's point, it'd be good to do, Rod, because I think the question that came up on the table is what the rules are for making donations to the organizations, what those criteria are. Many of these are 501s and 3s, so they're not profit entities. Some of it is state funding, some of it is federal funding, some of them are purely funds from a donation sharing perspective. Some have fundraisers, so they raise money, they bring money, they'll support it. And Megan's point, it came up last year that there's some things we could or couldn't do, we just couldn't help those folks.
Thank you. Provides awesome clarity, and I think one of the additional things that these organizations want is be able to demonstrate that they have some kind of fiscal controls, they audit that, if it could be proved that the city money poured down or out.
Yeah. I think that's good.
I agree.
Because most of our, they're not going to be on a shared navigator, which is a national one. Those are budgets that are kind of large and nicely integrated. There's some outside audits and things like that.
So I can have you go listen to those for Eric and then bring back it. A little, I don't know, two, counsel?
Perfect. Okay. I'll speed things up a little bit because I will close it in about 25, 28 minutes.
Yep.
This carefully wants to calibrate between needs. You know, other considerations, talked a little bit about Lucy's comments on setup in here. I'll step up some now. I think actually pulling this screen up will be a big help. We do, we will shift this table where you all sit down to where it's centered, where that center, we're going to move Rod over adjacent. He misses us.
I like my cubby holes. I'm figuring you out. But I need to be facial expressions. So do I.
The other piece that I think is important, look at, Councilor Stevens, we're going on utility rate studies. One of the things Stephanie, and I'll talk about this, it's council meeting, because Stephanie and I are working through right now is what do the ordinances look like? And so I'll walk everybody through that in council and what we're planning on doing, billing on that. So that certainly should get us more aligned on where those revenues should be.
On that point, we started this massive ordinance to look at all the rates failed miserably because we could never meet all the elements with all the fees we charged. So right now, we're much of ordinance independent. Our sense was the strategy was good to pull in one ordinance, so we could look at it once a year, but we could never hit across the board.
Well, Stephanie and I, and the suggestion's out in about an hour or so.
That's what I figured, you know, it's...
It's a matter really of getting the gas and the water together.
Building as well.
Building as well. We'll have Dave here recommend it this evening, and he'll be able to pull that piece together for us. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be... The other comment up here about aggregation and segregation of funds, one of the things that's important in my mind as we think about, if we're selling a piece of property, that we have a clear specification of where those funds are going, right? It doesn't just go back in the general fund for general consumption. It has to be as specific as approved by council as to where those dollars are going. And so that's, you know, part of that case that Megan and I are on, is present to council. Talking about technology and what we're driving to, so...
I'm glad you brought up the technology concept. Something for consideration is maybe possible funding this year or future for purchasing a drone or drones for natural cultural field analysis, GPS information, data collection, city emergencies, street analysis, traffic control, some sort of...
Yeah, so drones are neat. There are, actually Phil Piero and I were talking about that the other day. There are certain legal requirements and law requirements that we have to follow and But we are working on, actually tomorrow, we've got me and G.I.S., Scott and I do, relative to our approach with the G.I.S.
I'll ask you.
Are you coming?
I just curious what is going to happen with the study that's supposed to be done for the water, wastewater infrastructure? Because I believe one of the tangible items is G.I.S. But we'll discuss later that.
We'll present that. I did want to jump in the staff. The other spreadsheet that's in front of you all, this really looks at, we discussed earlier, our department salaries and what it looks like if we increase by three percent or if we increase by five percent. Okay? The thing that I will call out, there is a star area. We approved last year's budget for this year, okay? We have done some reduction of positions, okay? So when you think about that first column in yellow, fiscal year, one salaries, that's what was approved in the budget, but based on reducing some of these positions, a three percent or a five percent increase...
The yellow column is the actual salaries. It's not what was the...
Oh, it's not what was the budget. It was the actual, okay. It was actual based on our current employee count. So we are trying to reduce our employees a little bit. And then really, Megan ran across the field on the five-year retirement implications as well as our healthcare insurance, and wanted to give you a lens at what a three percent or five percent increase would look like. What I would ask is, on your notes, you know, for the list of department requests, please feel free to know where your comfort level is as far as increases with employees. I do think it's important that we give our employees a merit raise this year. You know, three percent, five percent are just examples in front of you of what that would look like. They're not absolutes. What we will come back with in the draft budget is that kind of formal recommendation from Megan High based on those inputs, based on our discussions, and then you'll see what that overlaying is like.
I presume we're going to have a chance to take this home and get it back to you?
Yes.
Okay. Because otherwise, we're going to have to stop and spend time on it. The other question I would ask, Eric, have you thought about the compression issues when it went up to 950 to 1350 an hour? We got a bunch of folks in the middle that are compressed like mad.
Yeah, so we talked about that. We really narrowed down to, it was a handful of employees that had gone up. There were six employees, really, half dozen. And so we feel like in that three to five percent realm, we can take care of that with the rest of them. One of the things that, well, there's a couple of things that we do. We don't budget a vacancy. I'm used to running budgets where we budget a vacancy factor, so you expect that you're going to have some level of turnover every year, and we budget a full hundred percent. Okay? So that gives us a little bit of wiggle room during the year we need to make adjustments. I did ask, you know, our staff to go back and really present to us specifics on employees and pay rates where they were concerned.
Just out of curiosity, is there any standard, state mandated recommendation or federal regarding the pay raise, either three or five percent, based upon standard of doing? Or is it just all based on what we at the local level can read on?
We are only required to pay minimum wage. That's the only federal requirement. So this is all merit, job, position.
What we find too is that, you know, my perspective on pay raises, when you start layering in a lot of different things like a cost of living adjustment, plus merit raise, plus this, plus that, you end up, I believe, you make it tougher for employees to understand, you make it tougher to administrate too. Well, we try to, you know, what I talk with Megan about and with our staff about is how do you look at what a raise looks like for an employee inclusive of a cost, you know, living? Because we have to budget it, right, from a city level at what our cost of wages out of the door. We're not budgeting it according to a COLA here and a merit here, and do we do it at this interval and that interval? So we're trying to really streamline things and make them simpler, which makes it easier. You only have one percent payroll. You know, we have 1% payroll table and we're trying not to create a lot of different gyrations for that individual because otherwise it's just harder to administrate to.
But he is not the only one who processes payroll. There's always a backup to make sure it's.
How is our, our pay, our pay rates plus increases average up with other municipal cities of the same size as Alpine? Are we compatible or are we up the gap?
We are compatible with the size of Alpine. We're actually probably a little bit above some of the smaller areas. Being in the tri-county area, we do compete with each other. It is always been an issue with law enforcement. Chair's office may pay more one year and PD does a little increase and now they're paying more and employees are coming and going. But on, we used to have access to, it was the national database for salaries and we were, we were really competitive. We fell right within the range. We had a couple of low positions, but we always tried to have incentives from when I started with the city till now, there's always been that incentive is we may not start you off at that high dollar rate like the oil field, but if you get your CDL, you get an incentive. If you get your certification, you get an incentive. So there's always something to, to look forward and look up to. You, you don't sit stagnant unless you choose to. I mean, if the employee chooses just to do the bare minimum, the basics, and they don't want to put in 110%, then that's their, that's their decision.
I did want to jump into kind of our fund balances and our equity position. Megan, Megan, her life has been working diligently on helping us understand where we're at. I didn't have anything to present on the slide, she's going to present for us.
So, and I can get you guys copies. It just has to be understood that this is an estimate. So basically if you, we take the beginning fund balance, which would have been the 930 2018, for the general fund, we had 1.7 million. That's restricted, permitted, and unrestricted. If we look at how much revenue the city brought in, for the general fund, it was 4.6 million. And I have all the numbers, but I'm just giving you the average. And we add that to the fund balance, we subtract our expenses of 4.28 million. That gives us roughly 2.039 as a fund balance. Here's where it gets complicated. To have a true fund balance, to know exactly what the numbers are, there's a lot of things that we have to take into consideration. So the general fund can be pretty simple, as in you take your beginning, you add your revenue, you subtract your expenses, and that's what you have. The only thing different this past year is there was a lot of items encumbered that will hit the fund balance. The two biggest ones is 150,000 that was approved by council for the roads. So that technically has to come off as well. The 140,584 that goes into a reserve account, that was encumbered so that the money could be moved. All of the encumbered bills have been encumbered but haven't been paid. So this is only actual revenue, actual expenses. So as we get in those handful of invoices, utility payments, those will make a difference. I also took into consideration the restricted, committed, and other committed. So the restricted basically is any funds we have that are set aside specific, which would be our skate park. The committed fund balance is all of the reserve accounts. Those are committed specifically to the creek project, the fire department, capital improvements. And then other committed, one of my goals this year is to have the interest committed from those reserves to those reserves. Right now it's not. We have it listed as other. The intention's there, but just not the actual paperwork to say that's what it's for. Which would give us an estimated unassigned fund balance of 1.6 million. So last year the budget balance, because they were using, or the fund balance was used to budget the general fund budget this past fiscal year. So because we adopted the same budget for this year, the 251,000 is also technically committed to balance the budget. So that drops it down again.
So what do you think, so you're talking general fund, correct?
Yes.
So if you took out the other 250K, you're down to about, you know, one quarter, is that right? Okay. And we started the year with?
1.7.
Okay, so we spent more, but we expected that because we took money out of the reserve, we put money in the reserve, and we have a 290, because I would call this 291,000, we're an allocate out of fund balance. So.
And of course, these are all estimates. As we continue to get, usually by December, we should have everything paid that was for last fiscal year. I'm pretty diligent at getting after departments to make sure we have everything so that we don't get hit with last minute surprises. We really want to get them all taken care of.
So in your, in your best estimate, you're saying that at the end of this fiscal year of the county, we're in the black?
Now with the water and wastewater and gas, and those aren't fund balances, those are net positions. So those are a little bit more difficult because they operate as a business. We also have to take into consideration all the liabilities. So we actually record our retirement. Those inflows and outflows have to be taken into consideration. We also have inventory, we also have just your general liabilities, all your assets. So all of that is, is a little bit more detailed work with having huge expenses, and I, and I'll go into it a little bit with my, my budget report or end of the quarter report. With all those emergencies that happened at the end of the year, huge chunks of money were spent that weren't really budgeted. The money was there, but it's properly allocating it and understanding that, okay, we may have budgeted this amount, we needed to amend it to be able to cover these expenses. The one thing that was not done last year that I, we'll have to come back to council and revisit with is the reserve accounts. None of the money was transferred out. So lucky we still have the money and lucky we had the ability to, to cut all those checks without having to. So they're, they're both pretty much in the black. Airport, they always tend to spend more than what is budgeted. I know that we increased the gas rate, I mean, the fuel rates because we haven't really had enough time with that to see what it will actually do. I can't really predict that it's going to be a big amount extra. I know that the last quarter they spent, they spent 124,000 for fuel and buying it and we brought in about 163,000. So there's still a little bit of a profit there, but we also have to take into consideration the fuel on hand. So they operate like businesses, so it's a little bit different because you have your assets and inventory and all of those items.
Anything that we, what we propose to council for discussion on the 19th as far as a recommended amended budget, we'll be very clear on, you know, in my mind, we've got, we've got to provide a council like balanced budget. Anything that we're going to spend above that, you have to know specifically, you know, that fund or that net position, where it's coming from, and it has to be approved at that, and it has to be a substantive type project. We can operate as a city year in, year out with our general revenues that come in. It's using what may be there as a, as a fund balance. We're doing equity transfer from our gas department to pay for substantive type projects. So that's what, what Megan and I are really closing in on now and what does that look like so that you'll have that part of the money. Fair enough?
So i- if you want all that information, the form, can I just go fast? So it's really simple. When we sat down with all the departments, we asked them, what do you want to accomplish this year? So all of them put together a kind of capital plan, want list, and then narrowed it down to more of what they really wanted to accomplish this year. We did make it very clear to them that it may not happen, but we wanted everyone's input. So it wasn't a set in stone, you're going to get this because you asked for it. It was we need to know how you're planning and what you're going to do this year and what you need to be able to do it. So of course, the first column is the departments, the second column is their request, and those are in order as they requested them. So 1, 2, 3, 4 in the order that requested. So that was their priority and how they ranked it. Some of them have estimated numbers, some of them don't. The reason why some of them don't is they may be able to do it within their budget. It's not for certain, but it's their priority and they want people, us, Eric, Cynthia, myself, the council to know that if down the road they need more money, they're hoping it's available. The budget source is telling me where the funds are coming from. Currently, the city doesn't have some of the grants that we've had in the past, especially for the law enforcement. I know that we'll be up for some, I believe in December, February timeframe, but right now we don't actually have any in operation. So any request from law enforcement would basically be coming from the general fund. Then we added a little section called council priority. We kind of wanted you to rank what you felt was important. I know everyone will have a one on rose, but kind of what you were seeing, how you wanted the budget to move forward, it is council's budget, so we kind of wanted to give you the opportunity to be able to go in and, you know, maybe this is more of a priority for you than something else, or we need to really address it this year, not next year, or vice versa. And then there's a section for notes. So the notes could be anything from, you know what, I really want this to be a priority, let's add this, questions, what are, you know, what are we going to do with, with anything? I mean, you can use as much of the paper front back as you want. The only thing that I ask because we are trying to deadline this and make sure we get everything within the council meetings to get approved, is that I get this back by Friday.
What is this, we don't have it in front of us?
It's the two page.
It is two page, but I, there's an update on here if you do anything back other than, it's interesting, but there's no numbers out here.
Well, and that's, the number part is going to be the hard part because all of these are pretty much already budgeted. I can email you guys a copy of the current budget, that would probably help you. And then you'll see, because there's already line items for training. Everyone has line items for training, everyone has line items for like maintenance. The ones that are, the ones that are more important would probably be towards the bottom and those are all the big capital purchases. Some of these can be done within the current budget. So it provides you kind of what they're looking at, ranking and what their priorities are. And I can get you, I can add a little column probably tonight or tomorrow morning where it says if it's in the budget currently or not. And then if it is in the budget, tell you what their amount is, if that would help you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That will be helpful.
But Friday at what time?
I, I just, right now I'm going to walk away with this and I have no idea what to do with this specifically. That will be meaningful for you. That's my strong point. So I'm happy to go work it. The one thing I'm walking away with is give thoughts for alternative salary increases and whatever the hell, it's kind of hard to make a judgment.
Well, what we can do that might just make it a little bit easier is, is just take, take what we talked about in the last hour and a half today. Certainly everybody's, you know, puts time into gathering thoughts on goals that you want to accomplish this year and use this to then send a note back to Megan and I. Here, you know, based on these discussions, here are things that I feel very sound about wanting to make sure we accomplish in this fiscal year budget, along with a salary, you know, increase type recommendation for our staff. And then we will work that into our proposed draft budget. Thank you.
We'll give it our best shot. I mean, I'm going to use Robert as an example on parks. So right now there's three items on the parks department, pool, vacuum, pool maintenance, and mowing deck. The dollar value for those in a $13 million budget is nets.
Right.
The big issue that I think, and you know, Marcy's here, that Marcy and the parks department, parks board have worked with Robert on is do we go higher an additional one and a half? A half ahead was for grants, a half ahead was for supporting, I'll say, allocation of assets associated in terms of our coordinator. That's not in here, so I don't know how you're going to make heads or tails of that from a priority standpoint.
Right.
It would almost, and I know Eric, you and Megan and your team are working like mad, it's hard for me to make an evaluation of priority without almost seeing a budget and my recommendation almost be put together, let's make a draft budget out of me. Then we can give you some feedback that says, ah, okay, this works or this doesn't work. Anyway, that's my thought, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but that, that's an opportunity for us to give you some real feedback that says, because as you point out, there will be more needs.